You're watching CHCO TV's gavel to gavel coverage of the September 2025 Committee of the Whole Meeting for the Municipal District of St. Stephen. I'm Florence Mitchell. Today's meeting begins with an active transportation presentation by Kelly Harrell and Lori McKenzie on behalf of Horizon Health Network. Under New Business, Mayor McKeckern will provide a community safety update with a discussion on a possible bylaw for tenting on private property and a discussion on downtown parking. Counselor Heislip will provide an update on the world's oldest basketball court and Deputy Mayor Wheaton and Counselor Rotis will provide a healthcare update. Finally, committee will discuss council budget priorities. Now let's join committee in the Moosehead Room at the Garsalon Civic Center in St. Stephen.
Welcome to the Municipal District of St. Stephen Committee of the Whole Agenda, Thursday, September 11th at 2:25, 6:00 PM. Call to order. Before we begin, I'd like to respectfully acknowledge that we are gathered today on ancestral unceded territory of the Pasundemacadi people. Need a mover and seconder that the agenda of the Committee of the Whole Meeting, September 11th, 2025 be approved. Counselor Heislip?
Second.
Counselor Greenlaw? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried, thank you. Any conflicts of interest this evening? Seeing none? Mover and seconder that the minutes of the Committee of the Whole Meeting held August 13th, 2025 be approved as presented?
No.
Counselor Wright? Deputy Mayor Wheaton? Questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, motion carried, thank you. Okay. Up next, we get active transportation presentation by Kelly Harrell and Lori McKenzie on behalf of Horizon Health, Horizon Public Health, sorry.
Yeah, no, thank you. Well, thank you to the mayor and to council for just having us here tonight to talk. So as Alan said, my name's Kelly Harrell, I'm a public health nurse, and this is my colleague here, Lori McKenzie, who's a public health dietitian. Really appreciate this opportunity to talk to you guys about something that is near and dear to our hearts, both professionally as well as personally. So just to start out, actually, I'd like to just have a little fun poll to ask everybody around the table. Just curious, for tonight, everybody who's here, just wondering how everybody, and even the audience, everybody can participate in this, how did everybody get to this meeting tonight? I'm just gonna, for a show of hands, who got here tonight by a motorized vehicle? So like an SUV, a truck, a car?
Okay.
Okay. No, very good. Next question is, how many people got here tonight by walking? Okay, so we have two people who walked. How many people got here by bicycle? Okay, so nobody got here from a bicycle. So... I think that was a motorized bicycle, yeah, a motorbike. So really, this is the reason that we are here tonight, is because we actually would like to take an opportunity to suggest that we could change the culture of the way people get from point A to point B in our community. So we know that changing culture takes a lot of work, but we also know that it's not impossible, and we have a great example that we'd like to share with you. Oh, hopefully this will work, just one second here. Okay, I think it will. Sometimes it just takes a second after I turn it on. No, maybe it won't. Oh, is that it? Okay, there we go. Oh. Okay, perfect. We'll see, I'll try for the next one, see if it works. So basically, if we asked this question, just so you all know, if we asked this question in the Netherlands in the 1960s or 70s, we would've had somewhat of a very similar response. Most people would've gotten here by a motorized vehicle. But if you fast forward to present day, if we could just pretend for a moment that we were actually in Amsterdam, the Netherlands, if we had asked that question about walking, about 25% of you in this room would've raised your hand. If we had asked about biking, over a third would've raised their hand. So the majority of people would have not used motorized vehicles to get to this meeting tonight. And we want to suggest that just like the Netherlands changed their culture, we have an opportunity to do the same thing. So what, the way that the Netherlands did this is basically, they decide, it was very intentional, they decided they wanted to promote what's called an active transportation plan. And all that active transportation means is it's just basically using your own power to get from point A to point B. That's pretty much it. So you could walk, you could jog, you could run, rollerblading, skateboarding, you name it, something like that. And so when we looked at this example of this cultural shift, you can see in the picture there from 1972, then to a picture 2013, same location, there is a dramatic change, just in terms of how people got around. And the way that the Netherlands did this is basically, they started out, which is what we could do, with a plan. And they also built the necessary infrastructure to support active transportation. So Lori and I are here tonight because we just want to say that our community could do the same thing. And we actually have some interesting information we're gonna share with you in terms of why we feel this change is so important, but also, we want to talk about how we can actually get there. And the Netherlands, I gotta just add, they were so effective in their planning that actually today, bikes outnumber people in the Netherlands. So we, we really can do something with this. Alright, sorry, next slide. Oh darn, I wish it would work. Okay, so this, we're just gonna talk a little bit about the why. So here are some of the benefits. So, starting out with the first point there, Celeste, if you want to just click that next one. So basically, access to transportation is huge, and I think everybody in this room knows full well just how challenging transportation is in our communities. So having a system like this, it would help everybody, but it would especially help people that just lack reliable transportation. So that's one thing to consider. Also, just to consider a bicycle for a moment, you know, apart from that initial cost of a helmet and also a bike, it's free to get around town indefinitely. So, actually, and one other great thing about using a bicycle is the fact that you get exercise, it promotes mental wellbeing and physical wellbeing, and that brings us to our next point, so the health benefits. So we also know that regular physical activity is proven to prevent and also help manage conditions such as heart disease, stroke, diabetes, various types of cancers. It also helps to prevent high blood pressure, maintain a healthy body weight, and it can improve mental health, quality of life and wellbeing. So all of those things. And interestingly, many of you are probably aware of the Horizon Community Health Needs Assessment that took place pretty recently. So according to the data that was collected from residents with this survey, or sorry, with this health needs assessment, what they found is that residents identified a need for more access to physical activity, but also, they specifically identified a need for greater access to sidewalks. So we know that, based on this data, not only is this just a good idea in theory, but the people actually want it. So we think that's really important to, to kind of bring home here today. So the next benefit is safety. And I don't know if you guys realize this, but if you go on a street that has a protected curb with no parking on it, it's 89% safer for cyclists. And this is just because it reduces the number of injuries and crash rates and that kind of thing. The next benefit, economic benefits. So this can actually reduce road congestion by having more infrastructure to support active transportation. It can reduce noise pollution, it can improve air quality, and of course, which is no shock to anybody, it can reduce our greenhouse gas emissions, which is a really big one. And so because active transportation also requires less paved space compared to motorized vehicles, it can also help to preserve our natural spaces and our open spaces. And I think this is really important when we think about growing as we move forward as a town, and as a municipality, I should say. So the next benefit is the, oh, sorry, yeah, I guess, so the environmental, oh, sorry, I'll go on to the economic one here now. So in terms of economic benefits, one of the big things is cost savings. So to the individual, there's cost savings, but also to our healthcare system, there are tremendous cost savings, and I think we all know that as much help as our poor healthcare system can get right now, the better. But also, it can stimulate economic growth through increasing tourism and just providing greater access to businesses through like foot traffic and that type of thing. Also, having this infrastructure in place, it would draw more individuals and families here to St. Stephen in our municipality and would keep people here as well. And then our, last but not least, this next one just cannot be overstated by any means, it's the social and community benefits. It should be, I think it's, yep, perfect, okay. So if we could have a system that was connected like this, we could promote social connectedness, and I bet most people around here, if you've used the trail, like the water trail at the front, probably most people here have had the experience where you run into people that you know, you meet new people, you see all the networking that's happening. That's what will happen if and when we build this infrastructure to promote more active transportation, we'll have more opportunities for social connection, we'll have a more equitable, a more vibrant, livable community. And so back to that point as well about drawing different, sorry, drawing families to this community, the other thing that's great is, right now, like, there is so much opportunity for remote work, and it's honestly like so competitive for families to try to figure out where in the heck they're gonna live. They're often doing research now to look at what are the assets in this small community? What can they offer? Where do I want to live? It's actually an open question, it's not just tied to employment. So if we could give people just another substantial reason to move to our community, this would be it. So we've touched on a lot of these benefits right here, but now we have the next question, which is how do we do this? I don't know if this idea of creating an active transportation plan is daunting to anybody around the table. If it is, don't be, don't feel like you're alone, because it certainly can seem very daunting. But one thing that Lori and I did is, we thought we would start by looking close to home to see what other municipalities in our province have already done. And for those of you who don't know, Fredericton and Moncton are actually leaders in promoting active transportation. And if you want to know how they did this, they began with a plan. And specifically, this plan, you may have guessed it, is called Active, an Active Transportation Plan. And you know, in some ways, you may think that cities, oh, they're so much bigger, and you know, like they have so many more resources than small communities, and we're just here tonight to tell you that while it's true that there are no other small municipalities in our province that have an active transportation plan, we feel like why could St. Stephen not be the first? Although I will say that Lori and I are doing a similar presentation for St. Andrews next month, so you better jump on the bandwagon quickly if you want to be the first, okay? But really, why couldn't we be the first? And for the next slide, if you take a look at this, St. Stephen's already the starting point for the coastal link trail in Canada. And that's a big deal, because having this coastal link trail, if we can capitalize on this and we can expand and extend our network, we're just gonna promote more tourism, we're gonna draw more people to our community. And interestingly, so just last week, I had a conversation with lead traffic engineer, Tyson Obi, who works for the city of Fredericton, and he let me know that actually, there are a ton of grants that local little municipalities like St. Stephen are eligible to apply for that actually bigger city centers are not eligible to apply for. And if you want to just take a quick look at the next slide, so here are three options right here, but I'm just gonna hone in on the first one due to time. This first federal active transportation fund, it's actually a $400 million fund that has one focus, and that is to promote strategic active transportation across Canada. And what Tyson let me know is that in Fredericton, they do have this funding, and the way that it works is that the fund actually provides 60% of the cost, the city kicks in 40% for any project connected to active transportation. And just in case, just in case, anybody here is thinking, yeah, well, we still have to pay 40%, like how could we manage that? Well, okay, so I have another thing that we'd like to share with you, and that is, Tyson said, right now in the city of Fredericton, they are currently reconstructing Crockett Street. And I know this is true, because my daughter is at UNB right now, and she said, yeah, they are reconstructing, and it's driving me crazy whenever I try to get to my classes, it's like right in the way. So I know this is true. But one thing he said is that they actually decided to go with a 2.5, instead of, sorry, going with a 2.5 meter standard sidewalk, they opted to go with a 3.5 paved trail that's suitable for white, for walking and biking and multi-use, and the reason is because in this particular case, it was cheaper to do that. So we think there could be a lot of opportunity, potentially untapped opportunity for us to pass this by. So we really want to encourage the thought of really diving deep into this to figure out if there's a way that we can make it work for our town. So with the next slide, I just want to say that Lori and I are both thrilled with the St. Stephen's municipal plan for the draft bylaws that are there, and we really appreciate that there are sections within the draft bylaw document that include bike lanes, we think that's fabulous. But what we are proposing tonight, we just want to be very clear, we are proposing that council unite in a commitment to be the first rural municipality in the province to develop an active transportation plan. And with the reconstruction of King Street coming soon, we feel we have an opportunity to make this a priority, to include a bike lane along this main route of travel, and honestly, through very strategic, well-fought-out action, we could develop an interconnected system of paths, one street at a time, that would put us on the map as a forward-thinking, environmentally-friendly and inclusive community. And if you want to go just to the last slide next, yep. So we just wanted to let everybody know that if this is something that is of interest, we have our contact information there, you are very welcome to connect with us, to reach out to us. If you want us to get you in touch with Tyson Obi in Fredericton, he was very happy, you know, to talk to me, and I did get his permission to share his name here tonight, so certainly that's an option. And just, I don't know if this is like against protocol, but I would be really curious to know, just right off the top, just brainstorm thoughts, what are people's kind of general impression of this idea that we're sharing here tonight?
Yeah, it's a big thing, and, yep.
Yeah, like, my wheels are turning the whole time you're thinking, when you talk about economic, I'm thinking of all of a sudden, a new store opens up that repairs bikes or and rents bikes, so others that don't have bikes that come into town, they can rent them and not them. And, uh, then I have other thoughts, I'm thinking, no, I don't know the answer to this question, but when you mentioned King Street, can we even do that? Like, because it's a provincial highway, I don't know? So I, so I have to ask those questions, but, and, but definitely, it, the other thing you mentioned about the trend setting, you know, how, you know, how we all do it now, and we're all set up with two vehicles in your house, right? I actually just got out of a meeting talking about this only regarding bus travel, actually just in the office next door here, but it's just, and we did a pilot project a few years back with the bus, and it was just hard to change that mindset to people to use the bus, like, and, but, so to get there, you gotta encourage and incentivize it till we get to the creatures of habit of using the service, bus or bikes, right? Yeah, yeah.
To build it and they will come is not just a line in a movie, like it's actually true. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
I was just wondering, like, I remember years ago when I was teaching, there were lots of kids that came on their bikes to school, right? But as time went on, it was less and less. I mean, we had big bike racks, and so it would be great to be able to start, like, at the school level, right? I mean, because there is even children here that take the bus from town to go to school, which didn't happen when I was there, but it does now, right? And I know it's probably like a safety concern, or, you know, because you get the little ones, but when you train them to go on a bike, they just go, right?
And I know what they found in the Netherlands in particular was like when they, they built the, the infrastructure, like people felt an increased sense of safety, and so because of that, they, they were more willing to let their kids drive on the roads. And in fact, one of the slogans that they had for wanting to increase bike paths in the Netherlands was "Stop the Child Murder." And the reason for that is they had such congested streets that children were just dying in droves, and it was absolutely a huge public health issue. So that's why they really put a push on this campaign. I know that we don't have children dying here, so much because of, you know, traffic challenges that way, but if we can build it, certainly people will start to feel that safety, and they will, I know myself, thinking about, you know, having children, having grown up, I didn't feel really comfortable letting them drive their bikes around town, but if there had been designated paths in place, I absolutely would have, for sure. Yeah.
Thank you. I really like the idea, I like the, the plans that are in, in the draft municipal plan. The one thing I would just say is that, and I want to say this carefully, but we would have to be careful as a municipality not to make people who can't use that feel shamed for not being able to. For example, so where I live in the rural ward, I couldn't safely ride a bike to get here tonight and then get back home in the dark. So it, just to be mindful that when we're talking about changing the culture, we're not, we're not doing it in a way that would make people feel ashamed, or that they don't care if they can't legitimately do that. But I do like it, I see it often when I actually am going to work every day and going home, I see a lot of our newcomer families, and they can't afford cars, they don't have cars, and they're walking in dangerous positions to get to their place of employment. And it would be nice to be able to offer those things that, that for people who want to or even need to and can't afford a car, they can get where they need to go faster without having to make that investment. So I really, I really like the idea, as long as we're balanced with the reality that some people just are never gonna be able to do that, based on where we live, because Municipal District of St. Stephen with all its rural wards is not like downtown Amsterdam, so we just need to be careful how we...
Okay. Oh. Just wait, my, yeah, I like the idea, because I, well, I have a cheater bike. When we play pickleball, I go up with my, my e-bike, but it's pedal assisted, so I do get some exercise, and I use the trail downtown quite a bit, and actually do the loop over to Calis and come back through, because it, because it is safe, right? It's safer when you're on a trail, you know, and even though I have to get used to ringing that, that little bicycle bell there, that I kind of get embarrassed by, that I scare people, so, because they're so quiet, so you gotta watch out. But I, for a designated spot, it would be excellent, I mean, and like you say, at the school level, we have to get that mindset, because I mean, I think there's more four-wheelers and, and unlicensed bikes, motorized bikes going there than there is bicycles nowadays, right? So, so yeah, that's, that'd be an important thing. I like the idea. So thanks, Kelly, for your presentation.
So if you don't mind if I just ask a quick question, so in terms of next steps, what would that look like if, because it sounds like a lot of people are fairly engaged with the idea, and they like the idea of developing this active transportation plan, what would be the next step from here to kind of solidify that commitment, I guess?
Well, the, yeah, the biggest part is that plan, because we could, you know, it's all good to sit there and talk about what we're gonna do, but we gotta see a plan and get, get the reality check of what we gotta do and how we can do it, see how that funding lines up with us, and, and plan it, budget it, and, and, and talk to our community, and they're gonna, they're gonna be talking to us about it now, because they're gonna be seeing this, so they'll, so we'll get those conversations going, and, yeah, I mean, it'd be the plan, be the biggest part.
So would, I'm just curious, would that be the expectation that public health, that we would help with that plan, or, yeah, I'm just curious, or would somebody from council kind of take it under their wing and champion that, or how would that work? Or both? Okay, okay.
Or both. Yeah, 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 yeah.
All right, so, is somebody gonna be in touch with me? And Lori?
Yeah, so yeah, we could follow, we'll follow up after we get, get, get things together, you know, get this meeting and get talking. Brian, do you have something?
Yeah, just a question. I just want to thank you for, I want to call it a beta site.
Sorry.
A beta site, I think that's what you're probably referring to. And it could have good implications, so they can grow it somewhere else, so I think it's a good idea, and I think we'd be honored if we at least look into it. And like Al said, Mr. Mayor said, but we gotta see some plans, we gotta work on some plans, and I think, thank you for coming in.
Well, thank you so much for the warm reception and for taking the time to hear what we had to share. Really appreciate it.
I gotta do this on the microphone, because people don't hear me. Thanks, Kelly.
Let's see, now, next up, community safety update. First item on there is, I think it was last week or two, I got a phone call about tenting, and it's, the situation is, it's on private property, and there's no action that can be made because it's private property, and the only action we've made, the owner of the property, if they wanted it gone, that would be easily, but that, that's not happening in this case. So I want to just kind of start the discussion on what we can do to, to put something, a bylaw in place that we can enforce this action somehow, way or form. And I thought of, you know, I've looked, looked around, and there's not, there's not a lot out there that's already, that's doing this already. We're all dealing with it, but no one's really got something laid out that we can look at. But then my wheels started turning, I'm thinking, so how would you do that? Because I remember growing up, I put a tent in my backyard as a kid, and like, how do we put a bylaw in place but still allow that? So I, we need to build something that suits us all, right? And you could have a, a, relatives move, or, doesn't have to be relatives, someone come visit in, in, on a weekend, and, and, you know, we all do those things. So we gotta put something in place that can work with all those aspects and still be able to help these, these neighbors here of this, which it was not, it was not a good conversation, it was a very upset neighbors in that neighborhood, and I just don't have any, we, we don't have any power to act on that. And I don't, you want to add anything on that, Sean? Because you and I are both involved on that.
Well, I've had conversations with angry neighbors as well, and, and there's always lots of add-ons, I guess, there's the tent, but then there's this, 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 and this that goes with it. And those things are, you know, aren't really bylaw stuff that we could enforce either. You know, there's allegations of like, where are they going to the washrooms and things like that? And I was actually on the site in question today, knowing that this, this was gonna come up, and there's, there are, there is a tent there, absolutely, but a lot of the other things that are alleged to be there, I was unable to find, i.e. piles of feces, things like that, they're, they're not there. So where those comments come from, I don't really know. There are things that can be done on that site, and there's things that have been done on that site on an ongoing basis, and it's getting to the point where things can be done again on that site, not necessarily the tents. So it's complicated, there, there, we're really, we really are restricted in what we can do, and what we can do, we have done numerous times. As far as bylaws, I too have, have looked, and, you know, without much success, you know, you can, you can pretty quickly, you know, draft up a bylaw, and before the CAO went away, he, he found one somewhere and said, you know, here you go. And I look at it from my, my standpoint and say, you know, is this workable? And I have all kinds of issues with, you know, how would this, how would we carry this out? So I went to, went and did some research, you know, about, you know, what are the negative sides to, to a tent bylaw, and there are, there are plenty, and I'm not gonna get into all of them, but there's a summary that I think, you know, summarizes what, what the real issue is, because in my, in my mind, it's not an issue with tents. And, and in short, a tent bylaw often, often addresses the visible symptom, tents in public spaces, rather than the underlying issue, lack of affordable housing and supports, which can create more harm than good. So what are alternative approaches municipalities are taking instead of strict tent bylaws? Designated camp, encampment areas, low-barrier shelters, or housing-first strategies? So these are all things that we've discussed, and in some cases are working on. You know, I know designated encampment areas are not popular. I've been calling for that for five years, because, you know, I go out, okay, you can't be here. Well, where do I go? Well, you need to find some private property where somebody will allow you, and that's exactly what's happened in this case, but that's not working either. So you can put a bylaw in place, but that's not gonna make the individual that's living in that tent get up and go get an apartment this afternoon. So that's the reality of it. And, you know, there are other things in here that you need to consider if you, if we go down this road, and I won't read them all, but, but some of them we've discussed. You know, it is an impact on vulnerable populations, and a tent bylaw will disproportionately target target unhoused individuals. There's legal and human rights concerns, there's been constitutional challenges related to, you know, a right to shelter. The practical and enforcement issues, policing costs, clogged legal system, cycle of displacement, you chase them out of there, they're gonna pop up somewhere else. These are all things that we've been experiencing and we all know it. Public relations backlash, well, you get it one way or the other. If you, there are those on both sides, you, you know, we have to be sympathetic or we gotta come down with a hammer, so, but that's, you can get backlash either ways. You know, there's a lot to think about this and, and just putting out a tent bylaw will make a few people happy, but there will be repercussions as a result of it that we strongly need to consider, so. That's what I would have to say about it from my point of view.
Yeah, no, my, my, my goal here tonight was at least have this conversation and, and help people understand the challenges here we're at. And you're, you're right, it, it's not really a, a tenting issue, it's a housing issue. And I mean, it's, again, no one likes to keep, you keep saying this, but I mean, I just saw, saw this, this same discussions going on in St. John right now and it's a little, little bigger situation, but it's, it's challenging. But, but I also know what's going on in St. John is coming and, you know, it, it, it works its way here. But I, I, the biggest challenge we have as councillors and people in our community is there is the issue of that neighbor to that property, neighbors to that property and it's, and it's, and it's not, not something that we want either, like, or they want, they all, that, you know, that there's that worry, that constant worry about fire, drugs or environmental, like when you're talking about feces, you know, that, that there's all very valid concerns and, but, but I just, anyway, I wouldn't mind hearing some more, that's what we're here for. Just a second, I gotta get Brian's first. Go ahead, Brian.
Yeah, Sean, I just wanted to back you up on that one, as we have discussed a lot of bylaws and a lot of meetings lately and being a part of the PrAC for many years, it's good to have bylaws, they're there for a purpose. And I think you've alluded to it and I have to agree to you 100%. It's good on paper, but try to enforce it, that's where it falls apart. Until we figure out how to enforce it, there's not much sense of writing any more bylaws. You almost have to start in reverse and come back and I, and I didn't realize what you were talking about at first, I thought you were talking about your grandson camping in the back door yard. But I can see what Sean's saying, but now it's, we just progressed to another stage where we've been dealing with for three years. Now, people are possibly feeling sorry for, we all do that, but allowing them to camp in your door yard and like we said, it could be, God knows what's gonna take place, so. I feel for you, I haven't got an answer for you.
Wade, Mayor.
I think you have to take a parable pass. I think you have to develop the bylaws to maintain control and to have some method and some tool to use, but in the meantime, you have to find the, the alternative solutions to, to the other things. So I would say we should, you know, move forward, draft in a bylaw, have a look at it and then look at, at what it's gonna take to, to enforce it and implement it and then decide at that point in time.
Oh, sorry, sorry, I just, I just cut you off.
Something else we do need to consider and, and we'll get to that, I guess, if, if we move forward this, but define a tent. That same site prior to this had a gradge. The problem was the same, are we gonna write a gradge bylaw? People are living in baby barns. The definition of a tent in this, in this particular draft means a portable shelter made of fabric or similar material supported by poles, ropes or a framework, including canopies, marquees and similar instructions. So, you know, like a car tent meets, meets that description, so where does it go? So that's, that's what you're, that's the challenge, right? So, and that particular site was, it was the gradge. Well, it's not illegal to have a gradge. Well, the gradge's burnt down. But, and it's not funny, but because of the fears that people have, and I'm not dismissing those fears, they are absolutely real, but it's, it's very complicated.
So I, yeah, I don't know what the definition of like, of tent, but could it be housed with no facility, like, I don't know, I mean, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to dig into this deeper. I just, I just wanted to start the conversation, I wanted to get it out there, you know, that's where we'll get some feedback as well and just get, get the people talking about it and get us getting, getting to that point so we can do something because it's not, it's not, it's not an easy situation. Go ahead, Brian.
It's a quick one, so in other words, it could be classified as clamping. The mayor's onto something there too, is that I didn't realize the definition of a tent was, I know, a building without facilities, I have no idea, but you're gonna have to dig much deeper because it seems to be a definition of what can sit on a property and what do you have to have for, for facilities in order for a person to survive there. Anyway, that's it for tonight, I guess.
Well, sorry, you need to consider cars and RVs, because when it started, it was cars, so the same, same problem, so how far do you go? Okay, can't be in a tent, I'll, I'll live in a car. So then do we create a bylaw that you can't live in a car and it just, so, it's, it's a serious problem and I, I don't know how we fix it.
Yeah, that was exactly my point, because I mean, I've seen three doors down or four doors down, the house burnt down and the guy lived in the, in the baby barn. It was the same issues. And I have an ultra light trailer up the road that somebody stays in when they come to visit their family. And then we had people living in a, in the woods with probably not a tent, so now you gotta have to cover all those things. I mean, you don't necessarily have a tent when somebody's gonna just sleep out in the, under the stars in the middle of the summer when it's warming off, right? So we're gonna have to have an overarching, it's gonna be difficult, but gotta start somewhere, I guess, see if we can find, dig a little bit and see what we can find out there, but I can see the challenges because, I mean, definitions and, and, and what if there's not even a tent there and they're just living out underneath the person's canopy? And that's happened in town too, so, so it's a, yeah, it's gonna be a difficult one.
Brush piles, you know, piles of garbage, clothing bins, you name it, people will find it for shelters, so that will solve one miniscule part of it and it'll make a few people happy, but ultimately, we need to solve the problem of homelessness and we won't need a tent bylaw, I guess.
My wheels are turning here, so, and I'm just thinking about this one particular issue. It, it could, could, even the kids having a tent, could it be as simple as having a permit? I know no one like to do that, but a very, like, a dollar, but, but in that case, the owner of the property has to get the permit and when we can't get a hold of the owner to take care of our situation, they don't have a permit. Just throwing that out there, just to, I don't even know if that makes sense, but just something I just thought of right now. Anyway, just something that everyone's starting to think about as we build this and, I don't know. Anyway, well, we got it out there and we got you guys all thinking about it and, and staff thinking about it, so see where this goes. All right, no, I appreciate the conversation, thank you. Oh, downtown parking. We, we, we had an inquiry about the, a parking issue, was that this week? It was this week. Anyways, the, and, and in conclusion of that, we, we've had, we've run into an issue, was it back in May? May of? Couple months ago, that, you know what, Sean, you go ahead because I asked you this and I'm just regurgitating what you told me that you heard from the officers.
Okay, so when it comes to, when it comes to writing a parking ticket, to be, to do a, a parking ticket properly, you, you run the license plate of the vehicle and you get the registered owner and that's who the ticket is issued to. Not unlike any other bylaw, when we, for example, this particular tenting issue, if we had a bylaw on that, it would be applied to the property owner, not necessarily the offender. Parking tickets are the same, they're issued to the registered owner of the vehicle, not the person that's necessarily driving it. So what has happened is, is, is our bylaw enforcement officer for, as long as he's been our bylaw enforcement officer, has had access to the database of license plates through the local RCMP detachment. He would call them, could you run this plate for me? They give him the information, he fills out the ticket. That stopped in April or May. And we weren't really sure why, so we went to the detachment and they said it come from above, I went above and they said it come from above, I went above and eventually I ended up talking to somebody in Ottawa and it was, it was legit, no, there's security risks here, blah, blah, blah. And they didn't really tell me how to fix it. They just said, you can't get that information here. So we have found out that it might be possible through Service New Brunswick, because Service New Brunswick is the keeper of the information. When you register a vehicle, it's through Service New Brunswick. So there may be a pathway where we can, can get a data sharing agreement with Service New Brunswick and access that information under certain criteria. We haven't gotten on that path yet to, to figure that out, but then this came up, we had, I had a, a file and I answered the question honestly and that's where this, this has come from. So it, it's a relatively new problem and we just haven't gotten, we've talked about it at SMT, discussed, you know, does it make sense to try and do this as a region or, because we're not the only municipality, it's all small municipalities that do not have a municipal police force. So St. Andrews is in the same situation, Eastern Charlotte, you know, prob, I don't know, you know, I could list communities, but I might be wrong, but small to medium-sized communities that don't have municipal police forces is my understanding, we're all in the same situation. So our plan was to, when we talked at the senior management level, well, maybe we make this a UMN problem or, or whatever and try and push it as collectively. And that's where we are. So at this time, we're really not going to be effective and we, we could write a ticket and throw it on the car and not really be able to enforce it. So you'd kind of be on your honor and, and I mean, we can discuss whether we want to do that, but the cat's kind of out of the bag that we can't enforce it, so, you know. What's the point? Well, it was when it made Facebook. Right?
And just for clarification, Sean, I'm a little bit confused, okay? I know what you're saying, but it's not you. Is this pertaining to, I don't know, to buy something and park in front of a particular establishment? But I'm going across the street, so I just parked because I'm going that way. Is this what this means? I'm parked in front of a person's business that's giving them a problem because my car's parked there for 10 minutes or 10 hours or?
Two hours.
Okay, now the final question is my next one, thanks for that one. Do we have signage up that you only can park for two hours? Okay, I've never seen it, so I saw it.
Yes, it's two hour parking and you can park and you can go wherever you want. I don't think the businesses maybe look at it that way, but that is the law. You park, you got two hours, you can, you can go for a walk, you can go to this business, you can go to that business, you go wherever you want. Two hours.
So just for clarification, the RCMP, I believe that if you had a handicap parking zone in a shopping mall, they can actually ticket you for being parked in an illegal spot? I, I don't know. I just assume that because I've seen officers actually do that, but I don't know what the difference is between local police and RCMP.
It's my understanding that the RCMP aren't enforcing that. We, in all honesty, our focus from a bylaw enforcement perspective is mainly fire lanes and, and, and handicap, that, that's where we focus on. And from time to time, we'll, we'll do, you know, parking blitzes in the downtown, but, but typically, we tend to focus more on the, on the handicap and the, and the fire lanes.
Building on that, not to delay any problem, but you can remember a few years ago, we did have an individual on the police force that would go around in parking lots and look for stickers. And, and then they would end up in court for $172 for not having, so. Yeah, but I'm saying in that one there, it's.
Falls down to, Council Greenlaw?
So I, I ran this up the flagpole with UMN B and they did visit it last fall, they didn't get any real satisfactory answer from, from Justice or from SNB, so they're gonna revisit it with SNB to see if there's some type of a, like you say, a group thing that we can do with the, to make the data accessible. Okay?
All right, just again, I said, we'll get there, I mean, I just, hopefully everyone is, you know, is friendly when they're parking and, and get, help us get through this, this challenge until we can actually enforce it, but just be neighborly and, and don't abuse it and that's all we can do at this time. Okay. Two, three, I just gotta make sure I can still continue if we had enough councillors here. Yeah, we're good, okay. All right, next topic, Consulate Court.
I haven't got too much of a, an update. I mean, I know Richard was on vacation, so I didn't want to bug him too much, he just come back and he was really busy during that Archie and fundraising, but we did have our quarterly meeting the other night, Tuesday night, and mostly discussed what was going on with the three-on-three tournament that we just did the past month, the Archie down in St. Andrews and, and fundraising. And fundraising was, we got a couple individuals that are quite excited, they want to get shovels in the ground as soon as possible, like to see something by next year, so things are moving along. We'd like to get our third done, our six million and, and put the pressure on the ones above us to go and, to receive some funding, so that was about the gist of the conversation and when I get a hold of Richard there next month, I'll probably have a more thorough update on what's going on, so that's it for me, thanks.
Thank you, councillor. Healthcare, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, I don't, I don't have too much to say, but I'm very pleased to report that I've had phone calls, that people have gotten assigned to a doctor and I get at least two a week, so it is happening. And most of them, somebody had gone in to see the doctor and it would be maybe the spouse was later on called and said that they could be assigned to the doctor. So we have to keep in mind that there's over 3,500 people on the list, so, you know, we're hoping to get there and get more doctors, okay? So things seem to be going well.
Again, thanks for the work on that, because it is, it's getting, getting to the point, I, I'm, just for me, like, I'm not, not in the doctor recruitment, but on the clinic side of things, still working forward on that with the possible developers and nothing is solid yet, but hopefully soon. To meet the provincial deadline of 18 months, which was almost a year ago, so we'll see how that goes. Thank you very much on that and. Okay. I'm gonna have to have a mover and seconder for the departmental information reports to be acknowledged and received. Council Greenlaw? Council Cornish, sorry. We'll start with the CAO report, are we, I guess CAO's not here, but. Yeah, yeah, okay. And council got any questions on the CAO report? If so, you know where he is? Okay, next report's a deputy CAO report? Sean? Oh, you do have a question, CAO report?
Yeah.
Oh.
So you said deputy.
I was gonna let him.
Oh, okay.
Usually we let him talk about his thing, he might answer your question.
Well, I don't have a lot to say, but I, I do have a couple things. As far as infrastructure goes, the veteran crosswalk, I just wanted to give you a little bit of an update on that. We do have a, a pattern that we've come up with, one that is recommended by the, the Royal Canadian Legion. So we've got paint and stencils and a location sorted out for that, that's all on order, so hopefully soon we'll, we'll see that in place, once we get all the materials. As far as what I've been working on, on, on the infrastructure side, I have, as part of our water system audit that we just went through, the, the new inspector would like to see some changes in the drinking water contingency plan, so he's given me a template for what he would like to see and we weren't far off, so it, it's not terrible, but I'm working through that, trying to get that up, up to spec that he wants, so that's a pretty good project. I'm also.
I'm also working on a civic address change project. There is a particular street and I haven't sent out the notices to the citizens yet, but there will be some citizens in town that are going to get notifications that they need to change their civic addresses. They probably won't be very happy about that, but unfortunately, we're in a situation where we need to do it. And I'll have more information on that when it happens, so I'm working on that. It's quite an extensive project when you have to do that. You'll have to coordinate with Canada Post and they have certain windows that you have to comply with and line up and so I'm trying to hit those targets to get this into place. And also budget 2026. Frank will be glad to hear that I've been working on my part of that. So there's three pretty good projects that are keeping me busy on the infrastructure side, apart from the day to day stuff. Also, though the public may have noticed, especially if you're on alertable and follow the municipal district social media, that we put out a water conservation advisory notice this week. Just so people know, it has been dry. We've been watching our pumping trends and all of the parameters that we watch out at the source. And, you know, they've been gradually creeping towards an area where we got this week where, okay, maybe it's time to ask people to conserve. So we're not in a critical spot, but certainly we're trending towards that. So we want to try and cut that off as best we can and hopefully we'll get some rain soon to help with that. So please, you know, don't waste water if you don't have to. If you don't have to wash your car, please don't. You know, there's a couple of people that I've stopped and asked them to shut their sprinklers off that maybe didn't get the message right away, but just try not to waste water and help us out. So I guess that's what I have to say about infrastructure. Want questions on that before we move on to Protective Services?
Yeah, you got compliance on it and the water conservation. That's two of them. Still got another one, another section.
Okay, but I do. Who does?
He has another one.
No, that's going to be further in the port. I got it. My question is, the veterans crosswalk, like, I must have missed that. I didn't realize that we're that far ahead. I was actually talking with someone last night about that, because I was thinking, here we are, we're getting close to that deadline and it's going to be too cold to do this. So that is in place to be done? Or?
Yeah, no, I was directed that I was to do it. I'm here a couple of weeks ago, so I had to order paint and the paint is, should be soon. And of course, it was fairly detailed. It's not like the Rainbow Crosswalk where it's just put down a square and paint some colors. There is, it's going to be very nice, but there's some detail, so I had to find a way to come up with stencils to make that and do it. I didn't want to do it half arsed, as they say, and it's something, like all of our crosswalks that we have, it's worthy of respect. So it's coming soon.
And is it at the Senatath area or the, which location or the Legion?
It's going up at the, across from the Milltown, Senatath, it would be on Queen's Way. Yeah.
Yeah, and just on that, like, just like any of those crosswalks, I know the white ones hide it better, but when you start having colored crosswalks, they gotta be maintained more, as you know, because when they're bright and colored, I like to see them crisp, bright and colored. That's just, that's just me, by the way. I don't know, but it's just, they just, they look bad when they get faded. All right, Noel, thanks for that comment and I'm glad to see that we're going to get that done before that internet wave goes with it. All right, perfect. Oh, you do, sorry.
A little bit of background on that. I got contacted by, this is going back from last year, quite a while, and they, the Milltown Legion gave a donation to Municipal District of St. Stephen to do this crosswalk, so lucky the individual got in contact with me and said, you know, what's on the go with that? And I said, well, thanks for reminding me. I forgot about it, because if we were going to do it, they wanted to go and put the funds towards another group that they were doing. So this is what this came up and they found the stencils online and everything seems to be going good and I advise them that that's where it's going, just so there's no feelings hurt there in case they had expectations going somewhere else. I think that's probably a good location, but I'll let them know too. Right? Okay, thanks.
Well, thank you for your work on that. And for their donation, by the way. Thank you. Okay. Oh, so you got phase one and phase two?
Phase two. Protective Services. So because of the change in when the reports came in, where we were a committee of the whole instead of council, my reporting period for the fire department is a little bit longer. So the total calls of 41 is a reflection of, it was a longer period. So don't be alarmed by that number. I think that would be in line with the typical average and more of typical stuff in there. Nothing that I would really, nothing that jumps out at me. We were busy with festivals and different things like that over the last month or two, but I didn't really have much to say about Protective Services, but I'm open to questions, I guess.
All right, next one? You're done? Oh, well, didn't you have a question, Wade?
I was further down, but I can make a quick comment here.
Oh, you can do whatever you feel you need to do.
I'll just thank you in advance for supporting the Charlotte County Fall Fair and having the, you know, the fire truck down there, stuff like that. That's a great, great thing for the kids and stuff. Appreciate it.
Yes, that's coming right up. It feels like fall out there in the evenings. Okay, thank you very much, Sean. So also, we got the Southwestern Brunswick Service Commission report and if there's any questions on that, we'll have to save that for the next time that they're here, but you've all seen the report. Okay. You got a question? Go ahead.
On the Southwestern Brunswick Service Commission report, I will just make note, because it's been mentioned a lot in public comments about the, or public feedback about the draft zoning bylaw, that the PrAC looked at it and did recommend removing one phrase that seemed to be problematic for citizens, and that was that to be zoned as agriculture, you had to be a minimum of a hectare, and the suggestion is to remove that, and that's in the report there. So just wanted people to note that feedback is received and makes a difference.
Thank you, counselor. And, all right, next up, Parks and Community Services report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll start off with an update on our capital projects. I informed council last week just about the tennis and pickleball courts in Milltown and just how there's a delay there, which has not been down to us. It's the contractor who was awarded the tender. They've been set back with the very hot and dry weather that they've had. They can't put the product down in the high heat, so they've had to wait for that and loss of some of their crew. So, yeah, it's unfortunate. I have shared that with the user groups and as Counsel Hyslop mentioned last week, it's probably good that we're going to be the first project done in the spring. So that's at least one winter that we don't have to worry about. It'll come down fresh and it'll be good for the start of the 26 season. So usually, you know, when they get going, April, May time, so that'll be a positive thing for us to see there. The pool liner project, if you've been able to, if you've been driving past the pool in Milltown, they have done the first part of their work. The next part has to be delayed because we are conserving water. We were filling it, they wanted to fill it to the top just to see if there is any leaks, if there's any problems, and they would remedy them. So they are going to come back in the next couple of weeks. We are hoping for rain and if not, we are looking for other options. So, yeah, with that, and as the chief said, the splash pad is temporarily closed, just trying to save the water where we can. Other projects, the greenhouse installation, the base was done in early August. This is the August report, so, and actually, the next part, the construction, the above ground, actually started today. So the contractor came in from Halifax and is, I've yet to get their first day's report, but that's going to be good to see that going as well. And just an update on Rotary Field, even though minor ball is finished, I want to thank the chief and Dave and his crew, they added the nets up for soccer, so, you know, even my such, which go over the fence, regularly they shouldn't go over the fence now, so that's a real good positive. And we're seeing the middle school is playing there, so we're, you know, working with them and, you know, they're happy with the situation so far. They've got soccer trials going, so that's an update on the capital projects. At the G C C, we welcomed the St. John Sea Dogs in August and we thank everyone who showed up for that. We had a good crowd and it was a precursor for the county moose, which they came, so that's very exciting. It's a lot of work for our staff. I do want to, I want to thank maintenance, who often don't get the credit that they deserve. They have to adapt very quickly to situations, as we've seen with, in August, we had one night, there was the bylaw meeting upstairs, there was the summer concert series that they were preparing for, which was canceled at the last minute because of weather and all kinds of situations. They clean up, they have been down with staff due to vacations and illness and various other things, and they adapt very well and they very rarely complain, at least to me anyway. So I just want to give a thanks to the maintenance crew for that. And the fall sports are starting with, coincides with the school year, so we don't have cheer, they, the cheerleading group have found their own home, so we want to thank them, but that does open up a bit of storage and a window in our conference rooms, so that's, it's good and bad, but it's good for, you know, the minor sports and for cheer. So outside in the parks and the green spaces, I want to thank the summer students and the seasonal students, the seasonal staff who are winding down with us. We have, we've lost, you know, a good percentage of the staff and they, you know, worked very hard in difficult conditions with the heat this summer. And again, they don't always get the credit they deserve. One announcement is next Tuesday, we continue to remove the foliage along the trail. There's the section behind the strip of shops down by the border that's going to get dealt with, so it's going to be a minor incursion. It will be just early morning, but, you know, we can, we'll get in touch with the businesses, but it's a chance to let them know as well and to let you know if you know anybody down there, so that's just one thing. And we've done some, we have given permission to the engineers. Hopefully now the work that impacted the chocolate park for drilling and just testing for contaminants, which they have to do, there's no danger, it's just they have to do every 10 years. That should be concluded as well. That was last Friday, so. And like the chief, we're in full swing with budget process. We are collaborating, as Counsel Greenlaw said, with the Fall Fair. We've got equipment going down there next week. We've got events at, we had the chamber last Friday. We've got Charlotte County Hospital and the airport. So there's lots of collaborations and we don't have the staff that we did during the summer, but if there is any need for, you know, donations, equipment requests, you know, please get them to us in time and we'll try and accommodate them. We can't always do that, but we'll do what we can, so. And the last thing I'll talk about is, is the first thing in my report was just an unbudgeted item, which I wanted to share with council. It was just the chemicals that has gone over budget just at the Milltown pool. There is, with the liner is no more, it was, hopefully this will change in 2026. We won't be using as many chemicals. We'll have a good, great product, good liner, and, you know, that's something we've been wanting for a few years. So that's my report and if there's anything, any questions, please let me know.
Well, I just want to, I'll just add that, that you've also been working with me and B Power, so hopefully we're going to... No, that's, I mean, it's no secret, we got a ball field sitting up there. It's just we got to nail down, you know, open it up and it's coming very soon, folks. Just be patient. They had a few little hiccups, but it is a beautiful field and I'm looking forward to that day to put that field to a, to assistance of use. And I also want to, you mentioned the county moose. I want to thank everybody that's been working. There's a great team working on that. They've had many challenges as well and they've struggled through it. Counsel Greenlaw, you were a part of that group. Appreciate all the work you did on behind the scenes, working and getting over all those hurdles and it's been a lot of work on that. And just know that they did very well planned the other night, based on having, what, seven players stuck on the other side of that border because of passport problems, but they're sitting over there cheering for their team over here and it was good to see it. I saw a great picture of them all sitting at Pizza Light and that's what, you know, that's great for our businesses to see these things, because I know they eat, because I've had, I had two of them and they like to eat. So they're already intertwined in our community already and it was the community supported the night, that night too. There was a Tuesday night game, just an exercise game. I think we had 7:40 or so people there and it was good to see that energy again, believe me, it was so nice. And the kids did well. And I'll stop there for you. Brian, you got something?
Just a quick question, Kev. Where are the, I might have missed it, but where are the greenhouses located?
That's up at 199 Union Street. The chief, again, and his crew did an amazing job clearing out some area and it just, that's going to just help with productivity because staff are there, the resources are there, the water is there, and we've cleared some work and it's going to be really help instead of going back and forth.
Thing has probably come from my wife rather than me, but the lady that's managing that crew for the summer and the crew that's working with that lady, phenomenal job on the flowers. I think that it's been going on for quite a few years and I even heard one lady from somewheres, I forget where it's now, but when she comes down this way, she makes a special trip downtown just to see your flowers. So anyway, thank you for those crew, that we do have a beautiful arrangements downtown.
And I'll just add to that, they were very challenged with that hot weather as well. Yeah, very dry, there's a lot of water, so hats off to them and they stayed, they stayed nice and fresh. They needed the work. Oh, sorry.
I was just waiting my turn. I just wanted to speak a little bit to what Kev had said about filling of the pool and I wanted to just kind of put that into perspective, because the reality is with the, you know, the water conservation advisory, that company would like to fill that pool to test the liner and that pool, Kev tells me, is 170,000 gallons of water. So to put that in perspective, we pump on an average day about 850,000 U.S. gallons into town. So that would be 25% of our daily production. It's a lot of water and I can't just give it to them in one day without causing problems. That could put us into a boil or, like, that's where, kind of where we're at. So there may, we may have to spend a little bit of money and bring water in if they have to fill that pool. And it's not just me being a meanie. It is, it is a big volume of water, so that's where the concerns are coming from.
Yeah, and as, I mean, these are Sean's words, not mine, I'm not the water expert, but when the water does get low, that can cause turbidity and then, and that sets our sensors off and then you just, it's not that the water's bad, but we can't trust it and we got to do that old boiler thing. And I don't want to get in a situation, I just saw in one of our, well, in the land of provinces, I think it's Newfoundland community right now, and they don't have water. And, you know, look at the channels we have on a boiler. Can you imagine not being able to have people showering and no water businesses? I don't even want to even think about having to deal with that. So let's please take that conservation seriously, folks. Yes, go ahead, Wade.
I just noticed on the compressor issue there, the compressor shot, so we're two out of three, and is that something that we can fix or do we have to replace it?
We will need to replace it. We have a good relationship with the engineers that do our preventive maintenance. We are looking at if we can even access the reserves to get that, because we've got actually six cubes. This means we're down to five and yes, cooler weather and it's when we get the high heat and the fluctuations in temperature, it doesn't help us, but we are looking at getting it replaced as soon as we can. And that's one of the original parts from opening in 2014 and there is, it's just ongoing. You know, ideally, there is things that we would have done differently. You know, ideally, there is things that we would have done differently in 2014, and, and I could show you pictures, and I will next time we, you know, we have the chance. And it's, yeah, it's just one of those things that we are, we are trying to solve long-term rather than just band-aiding it and, and getting it through, you know, looking for a long-term sustainable, you know, remedy for the, for the, for the problems, so.
Counselor Heslop?
Yeah, the, there's one question on the, or comment, I guess, on Capitol Projects, which is the greenhouse. I mean, you know, there's some Capitol Projects you don't see benefits from, direct benefits from. They, they, you know, the, the benefits are more like social, and you get less complaints on streets and stuff like that, but we're going to be saving so much money on that, on that project that people got to realize that we just didn't do that just out of the, the blue, because we have to have flowers, and those flowers are great every year, but there's a significant cost to the municipality. And if we can do some of that in-house, that we're trying to do, I've seen online that there's numbers floating around there. It's costing us a quarter of a million dollars or whatever, but I mean, you know, I've never seen that number, but, but it is a direct savings, and we're going to see that immediately next year once we get those, once we get those ceilings started in, in our own greenhouse, right? So that, that should be pointed out. Another thing on, on infrastructure or maintenance of Jeremy's report, and I, and I think the mayor's probably heard from people too. It's the, the lighting in the, in the arena is not, not the greatest, and I've, I've got approached by a couple of people, and I got to mention it because I appreciate people when they come up to me at the golf course or wherever and say, yeah, what's going on with the lighting in there? And I noticed it in the game before, and that was the exhibition game with the, with the Sea Dogs, and, and I know there's some issues there, so maybe we have to look at that and probably this year's budget too, and, and probably address that, right? But just, I'm sure that Jeremy's aware of it as well, and, and I'm just pointing it out because if, if somebody talks to me on the street, I want to be able to go and say to the council, I've talked about it, and, and some people are aware, right, so.
So, yeah, so LED lighting, folks. You know, we, we thought we were going to put these fixtures up and not have to change bulbs and all those things, but that, but there is no bulb, so to speak. When, when the strips go, they're gone, and you got to replace them. And the lights we have right here, and I, and I'm, and I'm dealing with that even in my other life, but there's not an exact replacement of those lights right now, and it's not the same lighting, like same color, and like when I talk color, like the color that it's presenting. And, and the color is important when you, when you're, when you're using your facility for entertaining. And so, so the challenge of that and trying to find a replacement that fits. And so, and it is challenging, because that, that company doesn't exist or doesn't make that product, and they change so quickly, you know, so, yeah, that's, I just want to say that. But they, they know the situation's going on. They've, you know, they're, you know, they, like, I mean, these lights, these are all LED here too. Well, behind that solid panel is a bunch of little lights on strips. And when they go, like, there, there could be lights out in these fixtures right here that we don't even realize. And that's, anyway, so they're, they do know that the, the problem is there. I mean, you can look up and see the dark spots, but they're gonna, and he is gonna work with Kev on that, I'm sure.
If you don't mind, I'll just, just say, you know, we saw that with, with the swimming pool in, in 2021 when it was, it was so dark, those lights were discontinued, and then when we replaced them, and it was December, you didn't realize how bad they were, and it's the same, same situation. We are aware of it, but we're also aware that we've done a lot. And as you've heard, you know, with Capitol Projects in 2025, and we, we haven't been able to do, you know, the, the camera project, which was, you know, and, and so it's just not doing it all at once, and, and finding a, you know, stretch the dollars out as best we can. But, yeah, we are aware that we do need to do something there, so, no, we'll, we'll keep that on the hot stove.
Yeah, I mean, the building's eleven years old now, isn't it? Yeah, so. Excuse me. Okay, no further questions. We'll go on to the Treasury Report.
Thank you, Your Worship. Okay, so the report's there. I'll just highlight a couple of things that are between the lines. Looking at, on the receivables, the last council meeting, council approved us to basically go flat rate with residential. We're currently looking at how we can do that. It is a bit, a bit of a process, because we've got about eighteen hundred accounts that have to be transferred in our, in our system. And we're going to certainly be looking to get the assistance of, of our, of our provider to do that. They could do it a lot more efficiently than we can, but we've got some work to do behind the scenes. Currently, we've got primarily on Sean's side, there's some staff that are on vacation, and I think they should be back next week. Is that correct? And as soon as, as soon as that staff's back, then we're going to meet and, and get that moving. So we can get the water bills out on time. Interest was charged here the last couple of days, so August is closed off for that, and, and now we're collecting for September. On accounts payable, I would continue to be very busy in that area. They're working quite diligently. I'm sure His Worship can attest to the amount of checks that are going through, because he has to sign them, as well as tomorrow morning I do as well. This morning, or this afternoon, I guess it was, they had their first meeting with, with our service, with our potential, or future, I should say, it's not potential, future software provider. I wasn't part of that meeting. I think Celeste was, and my staff, my staff were. But from what I hear afterwards is that they're quite excited about where that's going to go. And apparently, we are just a run in the mill as far as they're concerned, so hopefully, it's not going to be too bad a process. And it will certainly take, I mean, that is a big part of where the time for both my staff are right now. Ninety percent of their time is, is put in making sure that we keep caught up in that area. So anything we can do to try to streamline that is certainly going to be welcome. Payroll processing, processing, that continues. Both with accounts payable and with the payroll process, we are basically, we've separated it out now. We, we run our checks on a bi-weekly basis. If there's something that has to be done, in the meantime, we do it, but primarily on a bi-weekly basis. And we use the, the week after payroll, so each of the, so that we don't have too much going through at one time. But, and payroll has been very busy this summer, but now that we've got some staff leaving with regards to students going back to school, that should be a little bit easier moving forward. It won't be as much to process. And because of that, we've had, and I do the record employments, and there's been quite a few record employments that have been done over the last couple of months, and hopefully, that'll slow down as well. Assistant Treasurer, her primary focus, she, she's assisted me with regards to bankrupt installations and that type of thing. Her primary focus has been assisting the finance clerk and ensuring that, that the payables are, have been entered and helping her with any other requirements that she might have, and so that she can get her job done as well. And I've been busy right now. My focus is, as well as with Sean and, and Kev, my focus is on budget. So I've been budgeting for, for my department. Next week, I'll be getting their information, and I have to deal with that, and we're going to try to get everything put together and, and ready for when the CEO returns after next week. Compliance filing, compliance filing. HST returns have been filed and paid. We got another one due next month, to the end of September. Record employments I discussed, and that's about it. The check register is there. If there's any questions on any of this, I will either answer or get back to you.
Thank you, Frank. Counselor Greenlaw?
Yeah, I wonder if you could possibly, you know, provide an update on the utility and anything that's in arrears as far as water sewer bills that are a long time outstanding? And, and, and any that had been written off as bad debt?
We haven't written anything off as bad debt. It doesn't mean that there aren't bad debts. What we've been doing and what we continue to do is set up allowances, so it does come out of, it is reflected in the results for any particular year. Those allowances are estimates, meaning that we may have accounts in there that will become bad debts that we haven't set up, or others that we've set up that we might collect. Similar to the question that was asked, I think possibly the meeting before last, our challenge right now is staffing in that regard, because that in itself would be basically a full-time job. I am, it may not, it may not survive the budget, but I am looking at that in the budget, and hopefully, we can take, you know, take steps to, to address that, and, because it really does take somebody that's, that's wants to, not wants to, but that has the time to address that on a, on a daily basis. I think the other thing that needs to happen is we need to take a serious look at the bylaw that, around that. The collection process is quite onerous. It takes basically almost three months to, before we can do anything with regards to, if we want to do a water shut-off. That's our primary tool right now with regards to collection is the, sort of the threat that if you're not paying, that we're going to do that. But it is, it's very onerous process, so we certainly need to take a look at that as well.
Thank you. Okay, no further questions. We'll go on to Future St. Stephen Report.
Thank you, Your Worship. The first thing not to be outdone, I too am working on the budgets. So that's, that's on its way. One of the things that I've really been pleased with with regards to our board is that we've broken the board up into two subcommittees, which allows us to follow through very strategically with the initiatives that are in our major plan. One of those is housing and hotel developments. We've been working with the local hotel, continue to have those discussions with them, and also with regards to a local developer for, for some apartments. And so those conversations have been very positive, and we're looking forward to seeing where those go in the very near future. I mean, do have a connection with three new developers who have not, who are not on the list the last time we had a conversation, so that's good to know. Other people are coming to the table to have these conversations with us. The, the, the business growth and population retention, the one piece there that, of key interest would be the Connection Works has been down to St. Stephen. There's the entrepreneur hub out of, out of St. John. They've been down to St. Stephen, taking a look at the old Dooley's location as a possible spot to put, to put that. And I think that's about it for, for highlights. Any questions?
Thank you. Yes?
Just want to thank you. I think you're doing a great job, and it's nice to see Future St. Stephen making progress in all these different things, and we're glad to have you on board.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the next thing, okay, so we've heard all the reports. I had a mover and secondor. No further questions. All those in favor? Have you seen the reports? Any opposed? Seeing none. Motion carried. Acknowledged and received. Okay, now, next thing is the attached council budget priorities. Anyone else take, taking a look at those? Yes, yeah, but it was just, anyway, it's just part of your report. You know, it's about, you know, guiding key issues of development of 2026 municipal budgets. And it's all about budget time too, so, you know, it's, yeah, the quicker we have those things and we can get them in there, because without them in the budget, they don't come to reality. All right, so any questions on that? If so, even some come to you later, please let me know. Erle, Jeff and I know. All right, now, where are we? Oh, we're at. Okay. I need a mover and secondor, that the meeting be adjourned at? Oh, I can't see that. Seven twenty-three. Counselor Greenlaw, Counselor Cornish, all those in favor? Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.